So, we're back in an open session. We're gonna have, would you like to have any open comment or public comment?
It might be an hour or two to the next public comment.
Great. No student report? Oh, do we have a student person?
We hope to have a student onboard and ready to go live in the break.
Chairman's report? I don't have anything except to say thanks for the reviews and just going forward. So you know, comments are really helpful. So, thank you for everybody that put comments. Consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda for this week?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. Can I ask a question, Avi?
Of course.
The 2,500 to CMA engineers.
Mm-hmm.
I know it's only 2,400 to 2,500 dollars, but we don't have any idea of how this is gonna go in terms of who's paying for this. So, I mean, I don't wanna say pull it out, but...
Yeah, I can tell you that the insurance company at a minimum told me that they would pay, they could commit to this, but they said their estimate would be at least $10,000 for design.
Okay.
And so, we're not gonna get anywhere near that before we get a little bit further along. They do have our estimate of 34,000. They haven't told me no yet.
Okay.
So, I feel okay with that number. I don't think we're really exposed.
Okay.
Plus, it allows us to move the process forward rather than being perpetually stuck.
So, we're meeting small group on Friday morning, and I'm hoping that that's part of the agenda, right? To talk to the Manchester Board of Selectmen and see where they are on this.
Yes, it is. We've had some emails back and forth, and yes, we will finish talking about it on Friday.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 opposed? Alright, subcommittee reports. Facilities. We have been meeting, the School Building Committee has been meeting. Our last discussion was about, um, help me.
Educational plan.
Okay, the ed planning, and then we...
And then the initial whorings that were done at the site to begin doing some of the prep work for beginning to make determinations and do assessments. And the other piece we talked about was the open community meeting that's going to be in mid-October. What's your kind of date for that? And just kind of a lineup of, it kind of felt like it was an overview of the items that were on the list to be taken care of this long preparation coming up to the original proposal.
We also have talked a little bit about school committee engagement in that process because we want everyone to know what's going on before you get questions from the public. So Pam and Julie and I talked today about Pam forwarding the minutes from the School Building Committee meetings to school committee members in the packet, just so you have an awareness of what we're talking about. And the notes are very good, so it should tell you where we are with things. So that's one thing. Rachel and Ken and I talked a little bit about communication, and we had a meeting today that you guys will talk a little bit about, but we need to solidify kind of how we're gonna communicate at the School Building Committee. And then there's this...
There's somebody on School Building Committee who does that, right?
Yes. They have, well, the OPM...
In that role.
Yeah. I mean, we were talking about a Gantt chart that someone said, "Oh, this is really complicated. It would be great if it could be simplified." How could, and we're all thinking to ourselves, "Oh, God, how can we do that?" And the designer goes, "Oh, yeah, we can do that for you. That's really easy. We can do that very quickly." We're like, "This is great." I mean, they have all these people that helped that we didn't have before, so it's just a matter of kind of like figuring out what we need to communicate. And then the October meeting, we talked a little bit about the nature of that meeting. Is it something that we need to be aware of so that we're kind of helping to present? And it's not anything that we need to be aware of. It's not run by us. It's really kind of an overview for folks to see kind of what's happened and what's ahead.
But I guess there's some element that, I believe we're making sure that people are aware of what's going on, and they're not like, "Oh, did you hear about that SBC meeting earlier? That was, yeah, I heard something about the meeting."
Yeah.
"It's the next one, and oh, well, too bad you weren't one of the class officials down fifteen that showed up, so..."
Yeah. There's gonna be two of them in one day, one in the morning, one in the evening, both onsite, and we thought, you know, how do we kind of negotiate this, having it, having something in Essex and having something in Manchester, so that we're kind of informing both populations? And what we realized is that there are a lot of people in Essex who don't know the condition of that building, so what we'd like to do is for each of those meetings that day, have available a tour if you wanted to just walk around and see what the condition of the building was. So, I really feel like both the OPM and the designer are aware of the two town issues and kind of how we need to work these communication vehicles so that we can get the word out and start getting people aware of the issues. Oh, and here's the website. Pam did some tinkering on it.
Debbie, if the OPM has somebody who can help with Gantt chart, does the OPM also have somebody onboard who can give us some help with communication and kind of tell us about how it's been done in the past and whether it's been successful and other...
Yep. And we were gonna, Pam and Avi and I were gonna have a meeting with her. We just never settled up.
My impression was just from, I think it was after you dropped off the phone call today during the Communication Policy meeting, was that they were, the OPM was pretty much, "We do the legally required minimum of, well, we do the legally required communications, but not necessarily the..."
Selling.
Hey, you know, we'll put a legal notice in the cricket that says, "There will be a meeting on a date asked." We do not necessarily coordinate across everybody to say...
They're not selling.
They're not selling.
They're not selling, but they're providing information, and that, and we're not selling either because when it comes to trying to get people to vote for this, we're not doing that either. We have to have a separate...
But at this stage, what we are, if there's anything, and I won't use the word "selling," we're advocating for involvement because involvement now is much better than bringing out...
Wise words.
Yeah, probably a waste of breath, but...
Okay, so this is the website. Thank you, Pam, for fixing the...
No, just keep telling me what you want, and I'll do the best I can to work within the confines of the application.
Yep.
And I think you're right. We work on meeting our obligations, so the agendas are there. The minutes there. We're starting to put reports up. The project updates are nothing more than articles that have gone out over time, so it's not fancy. I tried to put pictures in at a couple of different locations.
Yeah.
So people get a sense of it, but if you've got ideas or wanna see things, we, I toyed around with it again, and we made the decision at the subcommittee meeting to take off the community dropdown, so I don't know if we get any blood for that. And I moved most of those things to either about us or under District. And that way there, we were able to put Building Committee straight across the top.
Perfect.
Something that I think might get some people engaged and, you know, viewership numbers up is when we have potential designs.
Oh, yeah.
And if we publicize that those are on the website and under that tab, they might look at other stuff besides the designs. I think that will get people interested.
There's also a discussion of where are the children going to go during the project.
Oh, that's gonna get people nice filter us.
Well, so, just to be clear, the goals of the October meeting are to come out with what's the desire?
The October 4th is a community ed visioning workshop. So, we're gonna meet with the educational planner on September the 15th. And that's a collective group, 25th? September 25th. And that's a group of district leadership, teachers, some parents, to go through different steps of visioning what education, what our needs are and what considerations we should make about education in the future as it relates to building a facility.
And that's a buy invitation only?
That's the buy invitation only. It's like an all-day workshop, starting with the people who are practitioners, the boots on the ground. Then the ver, then there's a public version of that workshop which goes out on October 4th. And that's when we invite the general community to share where we're at.
Maybe just the October 4th for both of those meetings?
No, 25th for the all-day workshop for...
Oh, okay. October 4th is when we are ready.
But there are two meetings on the 4th. That's what you meant, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nine in the morning and seven in the afternoon.
You need to be both.
Is it duplicate meeting, just to clarify, is it duplicate meeting on the 4th just to allow for different family schedules at different times?
Yeah.
Some people can come the after work, some people can only come in the morning.
Just because that is less than a month away, is there anything on here that, like a link, or can we get out the news sooner rather than later, so that it's buzzing just three and a half weeks?
So, it went out last week as part of the back-to-school 17-point plan. Now, we're gonna take those 17 points and break them out into individual posts on Facebook, Twitter, and the blog.
Right.
So, it all went up en masse today, and now I'm just gonna start picking them apart and putting each one of them out there as a standalone.
Brilliant idea.
And retweeting. Pam, can we put those dates, can we put the date, the October 4th, up there somewhere? Because if you're fooling around looking at that stuff... Yep. Yes. Hey, there's a meeting on the 4th. I should go to that since I'm looking at all this stuff up there.
Can you do banners or like text boxes?
No banners on this one.
It's the calendar.
Yeah. It will start to show up. I can also, it's not on here yet, but I can put it on and just have it post immediately, and it will just be up there until that day.
Under Building Committee, can we have a calendar tab?
There is a color-coded version. If you go to the main calendar up on top, you'll get the all... There's a way to get the all District merged color-coded calendar.
Yeah, you gotta do something. I did it by mistake.
That's one of my upcoming posts.
Did you do that before?
No, it was, go back. Go back to the calendar.
It is possible, and it's usually when I, when I'm on my, and maybe it's just because of my personal settings, but usually when I hit this calendar button over here or this one, I see everything in the District. But you have to tell it what you wanna see, and I did tell it on this computer it's what I wanted to see.
Ah.
So, if you go under the customized calendar view...
Oh, that's it.
You can add calendars here.
I could just add my own personal calendar.
You can?
Add Essex, Manchester.
You're scanning a man today.
I'm working on instructions for this.
Yeah, because it's completely, nobody knows stuff.
So, if you add them all, then you can see everything.
I love it.
But under Building Committee, can we put a calendar? Is there a chance we could put a calendar?
I think what we know over time, and I'll defer to the communications expert, if it's not on this main page for the calendar, people don't dig into different levels.
Yeah.
What we can do is, I think very few people are actually going to click into much of this stuff unless you're really tuned in or you want to see what we've said at a particular meeting, or you want to know why we're ripping up the tents, which we're not gonna do. And then you're gonna go in here and try to find out where that came from.
Not doing that.
So, I would push, I would suggest, and again, this is not my field of expertise, key things being on this upcoming events, because this is where people land. And then, we can always put quick links in District News, but then blasting it to Facebook and Twitter, but I don't know. Sometimes things work, and then you hear from somebody else that they're on a different one.
Thank you for all the work that you did on that.
It really is hard.
Okay.
It's just limited. I mean, it's, what we've done in District historically is we've gone for a distributed tool. So, it's easy enough that everybody can use it.
Yeah.
Which means it's limited in some of the fancier things that you could do if you're writing your own code.
Yep. Okay, Finance Committee, nothing.
Nada.
Communications and Policy Committee. Rachel or Ken, would you like to give us an update on today's meeting?
Oh, I see. Today's meeting is mostly consumed by, yes please do, we had reps from a, or from a business called ClearGov.com, not ClearGov.org, it sticks in my head, and what they are doing, they're based out of Hopkinton, Mass. And for municipalities as well as, or as they refer to, they have schools and they have civic projects where their intent is just to blanket the 50 United States and probably the world with taking publicly available data from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESE, Department of Revenue, I forget one other, and...
Census data.
Census data, kind of agreeing on providing comparisons between towns and districts.
Or they, they have an email that says...
Yeah.
That was nice.
Yeah.
Really clean.
It's, yeah.
And so, their goal is to provide objective data here on, even right now, these are all populated with objective data. Any school District you click on it, as well as keep it updated over time. And what, and it was an interesting look at, oh, this is, on the one hand, if, and if you sign up, they provide basic data, as if, if you sign up for their subscription model, which is about 5,500 dollars a year, you gain the ability to add commentary, to do internal analyses, for instance, comparing, say, "We're gonna do a comparison with abutting communities," or KPM schools, or however, on expenditures, how things are going, pupils per teacher, those sort of things.
Same three, two, seven, huh?
So, and we discussed, actually with Pam and Avi and Julie there, it was useful to understand that this could also help with internal metrics around identifying areas where it's comparative areas that we could get to.
So, I have a question about this. There's a challenge with some data that comes out from DESE or whoever with interpretation of the data, and I wonder how much, how can we tell our story using the data and not someone else's story? Does that question make sense?
That's what I think what I like about this tool.
Yeah.
Which is, anybody can go in and pick out certain pieces of information to tell one aspect of a story, but the whole story is here all the time. Good, bad, and the ugly. There's not much bad. It's mostly good, but it's here in an objective format for people to look at. And I think it makes it, it gives us an opportunity to, they're showing us the tools where we can go in and put some...
Like an analysis performance.
We can go in and put in some commentary along the way.
Yeah.
So, it's like a frequently asked question or things like that.
Yeah.
I just think they're more transparent, and right now, the data at the DESE is, I mean, it's dense. You've got to know what you're looking for.
It's impossible.
And you've got to kind of hunt and peck.
Right.
So, when we do the assessment, analysis, and we try to do like Districts, Regional Districts, I mean, it's like two weeks just hunting and pecking and copying and pasting from one spreadsheet to another spreadsheet and then creating chunks.
Really? There are no tools available from the DESE to do that?
I mean, you can go on your DART and look at DART communities and look at some general overview, but what we wanna dig down, we do a lot of the fun.
Okay. So, I guess what I'm asking is, does it allow you to create a narrative of kind of how you're reading data and why that, why that, how that data is driving decisions and curriculum and that sort of thing?
Sudbury has that? Sudbury, the Sudbury side, if you look at their site, they're places where, I think it was the town of Sudbury, and their town administrator went in and added comments on this budget was because of excess snowfall or other, you know, or here's where we get these numbers.
Okay.
And so, it seemed to be a useful tool, and it drives for transparency.
Yep. Avi, what did you think?
So, like, here's a good example, right? Sometimes we get the question of are our kids in specific category, in identified categories like high needs or special education, doing as well as our generalized kids? And the answer is no. That's part of the reason why they're in a special identified group, because they need greater assistance. Doesn't mean that they can't perform. It means over time, we are gonna have gaps to close. But what this chart shows is it's taken the data and put it together in a way that says, "Our kids' performance mirrors each other," and the PPI, and we can talk about, like, they can't always stand alone, but I think they can become good charts and grasshoppers to help tell the story.
Right.
Which is, the PPI index, if you, if your mission in five years is to go from 98 to 100, there's only so much growth you can make over time, so eventually you're going to start to flatline or decline because you're making such small increments of progress because there isn't a very big gap to make.
Yeah.
So, I think Julie felt very comfortable with it because it helps her pull together things that she can use, visuals she can use, that we may not have the talent or the tools to create on our own, but we know how to tell the story using them.
Mm-hmm.
If that's...
What story exactly is that graph telling me?
I know, it's an interesting graph.
It's you at the bottom.
That looks kind of bad.
Well, again, that's within a subset of total two and a half percent.
So, all of our students have gone from 100 to 80 and something.
It's gap closing. That's why these scores are so difficult to talk about in a larger context because we're trying to improve basically from 98% proficient to 100% proficient. As Pam just said, to be able, yeah, to be able to improve within that 2% category, we're already high.
No, I understand it when you're saying that. I just don't understand what the graph is trying to show me because that just looks like you've gone from 100...
The improvement within that 2%.
This, this is the rate of change. The rate of improvement has dropped.
We're not, we...
We're not closing on 100.
We started high and then closed the gap. It's slowing down and actually declining. So, we're not making as fast progress in closing a 2% gap overnight. So, it's harder and harder to get to perfect, the higher you get.
Sarah?
But yeah, unless you get on a map, I'm like, "Oh, so this would be derivative."
Not absolute, right.
Well, that one definitely would leave some commentary.
That's, that's what I think, a little, a little green box, hopefully.
Yeah, the commentary is right, I mean, he gave us that example. It's right there. It's like a little photo of, you know, like, it would be a photo of Pam or whoever, a little blurred. It's just like, this is what it is.
Kind of like this.
Yeah.
So, Julie can put in blurbs that relate to student performance, maybe put Avi's picture in some of the, where you can put my picture in. Avi, can we put my golden tree, which people feel better about the comment because...
Right.
So, they put a...
Yeah, dog.
Avi, from the dog. No, I think there is a lot of benefit, and I don't think there's anything we should be afraid of data-wise to have a conversation about.
No. As long as we're able to tell the story that accompanies the data.
So, we can either add story or use these as tools to show the story.
Well, the situation basically is whether we're putting a story in there or not, they're gonna be putting out the data, so...
Right.
How much is this?
5,500?
5,500. They said they've got 50 school customers, to most of whom are within Massachusetts, and they've got 50, I think, civic customers, but they're, this is really the early stages of giving these...
Is it just a local...
So, local...
No, it's, you wanna remember your...
No, I know, but like, can you start for one year and see if anybody used it?
That's actually a really good question. We should ask if they, if they give us performance.
Oh, I know, I'm kidding. I'm sorry, I missed the question.
If, can we try, do we have to commit for like five years, or can we try it for one year and see if people are actually clicking on it, using it, if Julie likes it, if we're getting feedback? Or if only three people look at it, then maybe it's not worth 5,700 dollars a year.
Right. That's kind of where I'm...
I was under the impression it's just an annual subscription.
Yeah, we could dump it after a year. So, my thought is that 5,500 bucks, not a insignificant amount of money coming from a person. But if this helps us tell a story that we've been having a difficult time telling, and it tells it in a very coherent, you know, obvious, it's not the word I wanna use, but a very easily understandable method, then maybe it's worth looking into.
How much admin time is gonna be spent on telling the story? You know, and that's the other thing. Is this another thing in your plan?
It makes it easier, right?
Yeah. Okay, just, I mean...
To make the charts and graphs and...
Yeah.
Avi, these are all your graphs, right? I mean, when you, when you click on the spend page, I'm sure there's been a ton of metrics there.
Yeah, when you talked about it today, and Pam does a lot of graphic work too, because I tend to deal in large rolls of numbers and too much text, but, you know, I think one of the things we talked about is that this puts it in a really easy, more visually accessible format, and that will save us...
Yeah, especially when we're trying to tell the budget story. But we'll have to do some data checks because I'm looking at this right now.
I'm looking totally wrong.
And that...
What?
That can't be right.
That can't be right. Look at everyone else's average household income in Manchester. That can't be true.
So, one thing we might find in this is one of their sources of data is the DOR.
Oh, they have said that.
So, it relies on town-reported data as well.
I think town-reported, that would be higher.
I would think so. I would take it.
Okay, thank you.
So, we need to do some data checks.
Okay, so you guys are gonna...
I personally think, you know, if everybody's onboard, it's definitely, we're trying for a year.
Yeah.
To see, you know...
I would say try it for a year, but like, let's definitely keep tabs on it because I feel like it's one of those things where you, like a gym membership, where you sign up for it and nobody uses it, and you just keep renewing it, and then you're like...
This is the year I'm gonna use it. I really will be.
The other thing is, if we go to each town, we go to, there's a 50% discount for each town to utilize this.
Oh, so if we get Greg and Brandon to tee it up?
We don't know about Google Analytics on this page?
I'm asking.
I'm assuming.
I'm asking.
Oh, you are? Thanks.
So, the, some of the local schools, Beverly, Masco, Amesbury, Medfield, Branningham, Easton.
Be interesting if you guys have any colleagues, just to check in with them and say, "Kane, do you like this or are you using it? How are you finding it? You know, what are you using it for?" You know, in passing.
Did you say George, too?
No.
Masco, Amesbury, Beverly, Dedham, Branningham, Medfield.
So, aside from that, during the School Community Theory meeting, Subcommittee meeting, that was basically what we covered, and we went into a little bit after you dropped off any around the School Building Committee communications. And I think in general, hopefully, our next meeting in two weeks, we'll be able to really focus in on that a little bit better, just communication thing. And also discuss, we didn't even touch on policies that we need to overhaul this year, but in general, it looks like...
Lots to do.
Okay, great. Pam, Superintendent's report.
Good start to the year. Exciting start to the year. What I wanted to tell you about was, we started a new tradition. It's going to, it's a district tradition that we're gonna continue forward, but this was our launch year. We started recognizing people who were long-term employees, so recognition awards for 15, 20, 25 a year, and 30 a year.
Have you ever done that before this?
You've never done that.
Wow. Well, we're a young district, let's go.
We are a young district, so we had a lot of people this year, can we play catch-up? So, if you hit your 15, you're between 15 and 20, everybody got something. So, what we did was we, we put a lot of time and effort this summer... Oh, God. I fix this all the time, and it never says. We started, we spent some time this summer trying to figure out what the right gift would be, and we went with an apple theme. Two things. One, for 15 years, we tried to capture the spirit of Manchester and Essex and the spirit of teaching with the starfish. The story of the starfish, I don't know if you've ever heard it, there's an old man on the beach picking up starfish and throwing them back into the ocean, and someone comes along and talks to him about his futility of picking up these starfish and throwing them back into the ocean. And the story ends with the man saying, "Well, that may be true, but it mattered to that one." So, it's an often-used little story for teachers to kind of say, "Sometimes it feels like you're pushing upstream and nothing that you do matters, but there's going to be one that it matters for, and that makes all the difference in the world." So, for 15 years of service, we do a little starfish with the poem because you've made it to 15, but you're only half, you're a long way from the end, so keep chugging. And we, then we did the Apple Awards. This was, the women in the office were, and Avi, were really helpful in helping us try to figure out what we were gonna do. But we settled on the red marble apple for 20 years, the crystal apple for 25, and the 30-year golden apple.
Is it a paperweight?
I actually have the red one in my office. They're kind of like a paperweight. It's a desk ornament. It's a shelf ornament, but it's representative of teaching and the different areas of service. I think people felt it was well-received that they were recognized for being here. So, we did that. We have one 30-year, we're mentioning this year, Sue Hardy.
Oh, really?
Beginning her 30th year. So, if she sticks it out to 35, then we have to figure out something to round off again. But it really isn't about the gift or what we chose.
Pie.
And apple pie.
It was really about just recognizing that, you know, you start off the meeting with a great, you know, validation that we've done some good work, that we've been aiming for trying to get kids healthier in mind and body, and we actually ended up going up in our rankings trying to do the right thing. But that's upon them, and that's their work. So, I think it was well-received, and then we also ended with everybody going out to the football field for our first-ever all-District staff photo. So, we all got up in the bleachers and had the tarpful come in. So, I think the goal is every year, we're gonna do something different. Like, next year, we'll spell out M.M.R.C.T. on the field. We'll do green and white shirts one year, so we'll have a different staff remembrance every year. And we'll put that right up on the website and post it up in schools. Just something fun.
Can teachers, like, purchase it on like, you know, Snapfish or something like that?
That's a good idea. I didn't really think about that.
I'm gonna get one for you, Avi.
And it can go in the yearbook.
It can go in the yearbook.
It can go in your scrapbook.
So, this was just something fun we did, and it's kind of entertaining. So, while we were being respectful and honoring them, we also recognized what cellphone corresponded with when they started teaching.
Oh, that's funny. Oh, my God, are you kidding?
Before we recognized the veterans, we also, we also introduced in person all of the new teachers. So, they're the apple phone, the Apple iPhone, and then, you know, you got your flip phone at 15. That Nokia thing is 20. Bottom left is the twenty-five year. And this one is like the old bag phone.
That's the one on Greed is Good, Wall Street.
Yes. So. It was fun, and our theme overall was gratitude, playing off the work that was done this summer. We had twenty people go to the Yale Emotional Intelligence Institute. So I sent you the link to the video on gratitude. So we used that as a way to say, it's important for us to recognize one another and the important work that we do, and that we're very proud of our rankings, what emotions matter, and they're more important, and that's going to be our theme for the year. And then it was just a recognition for them that while we've got a lot of things going on, there's a lot of things spinning in the world, and I think Kirk is going to be part of it with everything for. And we talked just a little bit about the overall, without getting into too much politics, the overall climate, and things like Charlottesville and the DACA, and everything that that's going to mean to the way people, the mindsets of people, and the work that we have to do to help kids understand and recognize differences.
I loved seeing those kids in Colorado leave school protesting the DACA decision. I thought that was, I think this generation is really pretty engaged.
So we're off to a good start. Reports from all of the principals, it's a very good transition to the year, and, you know, we're off and running.
Great. Okay, goals.
In your packet.
Yep. So let's just.
These are not polished, they just kind of threw them together, so they are in draft form.
Right.
What I tried to do, the practical goals this year, to be quite frank, they are things that are going to be center stage and take most of the time, and that need tending to, and need to be done, I think, on time and with a great deal of attention. So I put the interest-based bargaining as our primary, I put in the professional practice goal purposefully, because I think how we do business is very important for setting a tone for professionalism in the district. And how we conduct ourselves when we have differences, and how we can have differences without being difficult and without creating conflict. So I think this is very important, that we get this right. It's something we've done well in the past, and just realistically, it's going to consume a great deal of time, and we may be doing two.
So, I like this. What I loved in your self-evaluation was just looking at the wall of professional development that was happening. And I know that still happens over here. It's just, I would love to make sure that that, so that's, that machine is still running over here while I'm focused on this. And I don't know if that's fair to, how do you put that in?
Because that's Julie's machine.
Okay, so you're.
Julie is professional development curriculum instruction, so what she's, so what's also on my list, but not on this list, is our whole emotional intelligence Yale initiative, training, and rollout. So that's a team goal with the entire leadership group.
Yeah.
We use time at our second meeting this summer to kind of craft the rollout plan and dates and how we're going to use our PD time. But Julie's really going to take and run and manage that on the day-to-day, and she and I are going to work together to make that happen. So I can certainly add it to here. I mean, that's not a problem. I just felt like that was going to be more her primary, and this, while that was mine, it's very simple to add.
Am I the only person who's seen that? I just, I think that you, you know, you own, ultimately own the promise of that, so I just would.
I like it, I think it was our number-one goal last year and this year, and it reflects it in.
Can I add, are you okay if I add it as like the team goal?
Yes.
Anything else on professional practice? Student learning.
We're going to continue, and I see this as multi-year preparation for the 2020 revisioning. We have our strategic plan in place, it's going to run us through nineteen, but we haven't gone and done the big visioning work, which I, that's why I'm kind of interested in this whole process that we're using just for the building committee, about resetting our strategic plan and big overarching goals. So I kind of see us on a multi-year path for data collection in some of these department areas. That help us with short-term goals, but also give us takeaways, things that can't be done in short order, that really need either a repaltering or a realignment or a refocusing of resources or personnel. So I'm just, we're continuing with focus on athletics program, focus on the middle school special education program this year. So the elementary report that we have, we'll have one for middle school, high school will be next year. And we're diving into year one of NEAS. Obviously, Tricia runs point on that, and it's a, but it's a whole new world for us. They've redone the entire process, so it's going to be a learning experience for us. I'd also add that we're going to have health services report due to you at the beginning of this year.
You mean in January?
Nope, in probably October.
Just a quick question, and it's not for this year, but we've had an ELMs review last year, NEAS for this year. We're going to do an elementary assessment?
Funny you mention that, because MESSPA, MESSPA used to, MESSPA is the Massachusetts Elementary School Principals Association, merged with MASAA, which is Massachusetts Secondary Principals Association. And they're getting into doing more of that type of a service. So yes, I have been thinking about doing an elementary review. That being said, I don't think it needs to be done this year, because.
I mean, I'm sorry, for next year.
No, the special education program review, because special education. There's a process side of special ed, which is identification and putting together plans. But then there's a teaching kids with special needs, which is the general ed's teacher's responsibility.
Yeah.
So even though we were doing a review of some of our special ed program, they also reviewed the overall integration of programs. So we got out of that a lot of information about our reading and RTI, that we're having someone work with us this year, her name's Kathy Pokarov, and she's a reading specialist, co-teaching specialist, who's coming in and working with each of the elementary schools to help with some training and identification of better practices in reading, and trying to get both of our schools closer to being on the same page, and identifying some clear principles that we're going to be using.
So was the RTI and the reading program, they weren't working as we had thought?
They're working, I think they, they can work better.
Okay.
And I think we can be more deliberate in identifying the process and tools that we use, and not always let it, we need to have a district package that then teachers can choose from, instead of everybody choosing different means and methods.
In different schools.
In different schools. So I don't think anything's horribly broken, it's just a matter of.
Tightening it up.
Tightening it up.
Great. Anyone else on student learning?
And again, I went very practical this year.
Yep. District improvement, so the first one is about budget?
I think it's going to be, when I thought about the year ahead, I, three things came to mind, the negotiations, the budget, and the building. That I think they're going to take a lot of time, energy, and focus, so I included them as goals. I think the goal this year is, how do we keep doing what we're doing with less? Because we can't go back, shouldn't go back to the community for additional funding for at least another eight years. But we know we have some heavy bills coming in. We don't want to, we don't want to have to strip down our staff and our program offerings, so how are we going to get this all done? I think it's going to be a lot of conversation and a lot of challenging, challenging decisions ahead of us.
Well, I think we definitely, you know, your second budget communication plan aimed at education, educating the public about the impact of the healthcare increase. I mean, I'm sure, I would say ninety-eight percent of the population up there has no idea we had a four-hundred-thousand-dollar head to the budget at the last minute.
I think we covered it too. Not, it's not covered easily, and it's a daily stress. I feel like we're checking in on it all the time with every move we make. But we didn't have to go through big optical changes, like cutting five staff members to close the gap at the last minute. So mission accomplished, from my perspective, in that my goal is to always keep what goes on inside calm and on track and stable, and they shouldn't have, you know, we shouldn't be grown left and right every time there's a budget move. The drawback to being able to do that or managing it that way is that people don't understand how dire the situation is.
Right.
So how do you balance, you know, we're a little bit on fire here, but we're going to do our best to keep things moving.
Well, we need, we need some boards of management and town managers to understand how tight the budget is that, they're asking us to look at fact-cutting and way beyond that.
And I think that's a theme that runs through all of these pretty vanilla goals, which is, all of these can have tremendous impact on culture and community if we don't handle them well. And if we don't attend to the people that are involved in each step of the way. Negotiation itself isn't hard, but doing it so that people come out and are at each other for the next three years, that's hard. Same thing with the budget, because it's always about making choices, and how are you prioritizing things? Why do you spend money on special ed when we have to cut money in general? And just getting people to try and understand the nuances and how we have to balance decision-making. And I think that's how I see the building project, you know, the checklist isn't overly difficult, but hitting everything on the mark and dragging people along with us is not going to be easy, and it's going to be very time-consuming.
In terms of the feasibility, okay, anyone else on the instructional, I mean, the operational budget stuff on the first half of that district improvement? Okay, second, the feasibility study, can you add middle, high school, because we, that's part of our goals, school committee goals? So maintenance plan is in place to ensure upkeep of Essex Elementary and the middle high school.
My communication thing got cut off.
It did, yeah, that was more free than. There were MITA, well, and you also, the budget is more of a, you mentioned you were thinking negotiation budget building. Last year you had, in your, when you renewed complete MITA contract negotiation, high school's schedule changed back to the thirtieth, twenty-fifteen, and that was probably a typo.
The schedule, the schedule is going to stay stable, right?
Oh, that's right, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
But the negotiation part, well, I guess, were you going to make the negotiation a separate item under district improvement or just roll?
I left it on a professional practice, because.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's right.
My thinking there, and I, I'm not overly committed to it, it was more around the IBB and the modeling. How we do business there can be a model of how people should handle differences at the building level.
Yeah. Okay, so, it was feasibility, educational plan, options for housing students, communication, good, thank you. I think this is, all this all looks good to me. And you've got communication is woven into all this, which I think is important.
And I thought I had communication on the original one, just kind of continuing our work, but I narrowed the focus a little bit, so I'll pull that for our next meeting.
Okay. Okay, any other comments on this last carry-forward piece of it? Okay. Great, so that's a first read, we're going to look at them again in the future, great.
Busy, it's a bit busy here.
Yeah. Okay, so on to Sue Brown from the Manchester Master Planning Committee. And you're the town planner for the town of Manchester. Did you want to come and sit at the table at the side more comfortable?
Happy smiling faces. Great, well, thanks so much for inviting me. I'm checking in with you, I wanted to come to you just so that there's not a disconnect with what we're doing here in the town and the school, because, you know, the school is a vital part to any community, and while you're having your own planning process around different things, the town is planning what its future wants to look like, and there's a real need to have those conversations together for many reasons. Not just the physical building and the land pieces, but the sense, the culture and the community, and the sense of community that, you know, the schools bring to it. So I just wanted to have that conversation with you. I thought maybe I would just start with where we are in our planning process, tell you where we're going to end up in kind of a short period, and then just talk about any issues or ideas that you might have for the master plan and what's going on in Manchester.
Sounds good.
So the master planning process has already been going on for about two years. And we did complete the visioning piece, which was our first phase. And through that phase, we tried to reach out to the community as much as possible. We had multiple meetings, we met with all boards and committees, including the schools. We had some large formats and some small format meetings. In the, in the end, we had a large community survey with over five hundred respondents, and over, I think it was, I want to say like five thousand individual comments within those, was just a huge amount of response. So in the end, we did put together a vision report, which is on the town's website. And basically, it really said, we want to retain our character as a, you know, a small coastal community. But one of the things that came out of that is people were very aware that there was a shortfall in that the town's infrastructure needs were, there was a real gap between revenues and our expensive needs. So in this phase of the master planning process, we're really trying to look at, okay, if we know that there's a shortage, if we know that there's a revenue need, how do we want to address that? Do we want to find ways to increase revenue in the community? Or do we want to look at ways to continue along the path, but just gear up a little, whatever that looks like with overrides or other methods? What does the community really have a stomach for, and, you know, what would they support? So right now, we're doing, we have a consultant that we're working with that's looking at economic development primarily. Economic development and housing is another large issue, so that's a little bit in there as well. We wanted to find out how housing, and the increase in housing impacts either revenues and/or expenses. So we're in the middle of that process now, and, well, more towards the end of that process now, and we'll be kind of wrapping up that piece of our study. Out of that piece, I think what we're hearing to date, and what we need to check into with the second community survey, is that there is some support, we think that there is support, for economic development north of one-twenty-eight, so in the limited commercial district, people are saying, we think we hear people saying, we would like to improve, check out what, how can we improve economic development in town? Most, pardon me? Most specifically, yeah, so north of one-twenty-eight at the MAC, the town owns property up there, there's some private land holdings, and everything kind of north of one-twenty-eight is our limited commercial district. People are also interested in saying, how much could we increase economic development in the downtown without drastically changing how that looks and how it feels and how it works? So we're now trying to think of the strategies, and we'll be putting forth these strategies and get community input on it. Once we've done this economic development piece, so people can kind of understand what our choices are, then we're going to bring together a number of studies that have been done, and do a comprehensive master plan that not only looks at land use and economic development and housing, but also open space and recreation, because we've already done a plan on that, on facilities master plan, the complete streets plan, which is a big piece of our transportation planning, and bring all the plans that we've done and put it into a comprehensive plan that has like seven different elements in it, and kind of takes a high view of things. It doesn't delve into things like operations in the town, but it's really kind of a high-level look of where we want to go as a community, where you want to go as a community. We're hoping to have that done by early next spring, so it'll probably be early next summer, the way things go.
So the streets are part of that? The streets, yeah?
Streets are part of that. So there's a lot of planning going on at the, you know, at the moment, or it has gone on over the last couple of years. The town has never had a planner, so there's kind of playing catch-up. We did a housing production plan, so we assessed housing needs in town. We did a community preservation plan, we're now doing, just finished up a complete streets plan. I know that's on folks' minds, because some of the ideas that came out of it was to create one-way streets and to, you know, do roundabouts, so all of these ideas were out there. The complete streets plan is just really looking at how to increase accessibility of streets, so to more than just cars, so bicyclists. streets, so to more than just cars, so bicyclists, pedestrians, transit, it looked at all of those ideas. What will be happening on the 25th is the board of selectmen will look at that complete streets, all of those ideas, and then they'll submit, they can submit for up to $400,000 in state funding for those. So, they'll be selecting which projects to ask for funding for at the town, at that board of selectmen meeting, they'll say, these are the projects. So, there is a transportation component of the master plan as well.
That's very interesting to us, as we began this meeting earlier, before, you commented beforehand about people driving cars to school versus walking to school. And in the past, we'd had bike and walk to school week, and that, John Will's, rightfully so, at times has been concerned about accessibility, so that's something particularly looking at us, especially with all the walkers and all the students in this area.
Yeah, I think there's a real need for the planning between schools and community and the transportation planning aspect of that one, because as you build a new school or campus, or think about the configuration of that, the walkability is really important to people for certain, so.
Yeah.
It's just one area. So, I've kind of thrown a lot of, a lot out there. I'm happy to answer any questions about the process or other findings that have kind of bubbled to the top. Like I said, there will be a new, another survey coming out in probably late September or early October, and we hope to have at least that amount of participation, hopefully even more, to get really, to get people to engage. I know, as you're looking at your building committee, it's all about communication and how to, you know, share ideas without crisis and without angst and being respectful, and the master plan is a whole bunch of that as well.
Were there lessons you took away from that? Like, I know you did a really good drive on for that master planning session, even the signs out in front of town hall and coming in. Were there any things that you found anecdotally?
In terms of communication?
Getting, in terms of getting people to attend and...
Yeah. You know, my experience, we tried many, many different ways, just as many ways as you can think, and what I found to be really helpful is always the personal. The more personal you can make it, the better. So, if 10 people are calling, 10 people are calling, 10 people, I get more, most people that come to those meetings, it's a result of someone directly contacting them, and I know it's really time consuming, but there's just no better ask than a personal ask, when you get asking people to spend time and be involved in those things.
As you're getting to these meetings that are talking about streets and transportation and open space and all that stuff, do you have an interest in having Manchester School Committee rep at the meetings that are happening between now and when the final report comes out in the late spring, early summer?
Yeah, so I typically do invite, and Pam was invited to be on the complete streets. There wasn't a committee, because it was just a short process, but we did have some working group meetings. It was mostly town staff, but we invited schools, police, fire, but we're always, we're always looking for those reps, and I know that, you know, like any committee, you're always asked to sit on so many things, so we don't, we try not to do that, you know, over abundantly, but that would be great.
I would like to attend, so I'll give you my email.
That would be, that would be super. So, is that specifically on the transportation piece or the master plan in general?
In general.
Could you give us a little bit of a, two things are on my mind. I know there's been a lot of emails flying around about an upcoming meeting and setting, is it speed limits in the area?
Oh, okay.
And the bike and pedestrian is looking for the school to weigh in.
Oh, okay.
And I think that's an ongoing struggle for us, because I think we support families' decisions about how to transport to school, but don't necessarily feel we're in a position to make a recommendation in terms of, you should drive, you should bike.
I can do those.
Because we want to be supportive of all, but if there's something, I think I'm unclear on what you're hoping, or what you might be hoping for from us.
Sure. So, as I said, there are a lot of planning processes, and that happens to be one that I'm not in charge of.
Okay.
The bike and pedestrian committee are the drivers for that, but certainly supported by the board of selectmen, I think that I can say that, supported by that, at least going through the process to determine what that support level is.
Okay.
So, I don't unfortunately know what that, what the process is, I don't know if they're, I know they just met this past week, and I'm sorry, I can't really...
No, that's okay. That's all right.
Talk a lot, I just don't know what that process is, or when they're going to bring for the voters, but the board of selectmen would be able to...
Okay. My other big question is, what do you find, I mean, with our project, or hopefully our project coming up at the elementary school, and even just for planning in this facility, housing, what are you hearing, what's coming out of the conversation about housing? I've heard rumors about development, low income or 40B housing, and how many units, because that has a considerable impact on our planning and being able to house kids, and that's something, just so the master planning team knows, if there is even conceptually a desire to build some larger scale housing units, if we can get that in writing, we need to present that to MSBA, because they can adjust their projected numbers in our school size based on that.
Yeah, so, that's, I'm happy that you brought that up, because here's a takeaway that we learned by doing a theoretical examination of what could be possible in town, and kind of got out there that that was a proposal which was, which was not true. So, as we were looking at and mapping out potential land uses, we said, what if zoning were changed to accommodate it, what's the maximum number of houses that could, how could, how could this community grow if it chose to? And those numbers were put out on a map at a town forum, and they were really discomforting to people, and we should have realized that that was not the thing to do. It didn't have get, come across that it was a theoretical exercise. There was never an intent to create large-scale housing, like hundreds of units. It just certainly would never be supported in town at any level. What was nice that did come out of that exercise in the smaller groups, people realized, because not only did we show how many housing units could be built on a site, but we also said, what is the cost? So, we did, within that same modeling, we said, here are school costs, here are the number of vehicles, here is the water consumption, and what people saw is, you can't residentially build your way out of a revenue shortage. So, that was a nice thing that came out of it. So, they, people recognized, housing is not the answer if you're trying to build revenue. There are other reasons to create housing, to create affordable housing in town, and I think we are addressing, are trying to address those by the creation of our Affordable Housing Trust and looking at community scale of development that will serve the needs of the community. So, I would say that there is interest in creating more affordable, whether it's subsidized or simply more affordable without subsidy, you know, just in terms of the size of units, the type of units that, you know, folks could downsize in, whether it's market rate or again, or subsidized, there is definitely an interest in, I think, adjusting our zoning or finding ways to accommodate a more diverse housing options in town. I would say, I don't think anyone is supportive of large-scale housing units, certainly nothing that would change the tipping point in the schools.
Is there a ballpark on number of units going forward?
I don't think that there, no...
Because the tipping point can be 20 kids.
Right. I don't think that there is, I don't think that there is a desired number. I think that the number is more to accommodate, for example, anecdotally, and people just say that there are no options for downsizing for people who have big houses or are nearing retirement, people on fixed incomes, our subsidized, our senior housings are all full, there's, you know, waiting lists, they really want to accommodate folks that are here well, so they were looking at infill housing. That said, there's always, there's always a chance that 40B could come in, and that's, you know, that's just a fact that could occur.
Does the town have an obligation to hit a certain percentage of units, and where are we on that?
So, the state would like each community to have 10% of its housing as affordable. Manchester is right around 5%, or half of that. So, just to meet that state line in the sand, that recommendation, we'd need about 110 units. That doesn't necessarily mean that they're all family units, but the state also is more supportive and will offer more assistance and guidance. They want to see family housing, because there's just such a shortage of it. This community, like all other communities, are hoping that, you know, that there's not a big influx of families, because they understand that there's a cost associated with that. But that said, you also don't want to become a retirement, you know, a naturally occurring retirement community and lose the vitality of your schools, and it's a balancing act that I think people are aware of.
So, can you help me understand, is it a state benchmark, or does the town have to make effort to get there to ensure certain fundings and reimbursements?
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. It's a benchmark that they're, that state would like you to reach. The only, the thing that can occur if you're not at 10% is a comprehensive permit, a developer, a 40B, a developer who says, I will come in and develop something, I will give 25% of it will be affordable, they can go around our zoning if they offer that, if we're not at 10% or moving towards that by increasing, by 1% over one year, 2% over two years. So, if you're not actively trying and being successful in increasing and going towards that 10%, then you can get a 40B developer that will, can come in, and the state will say, sorry, you're not, you're really not working at it.
Under current conditions, someone could come in and acquire something out in the MAC area and put in 110 units.
Yes, so...
Try it outside the street.
So, so, part of the, one of the reasons to do the planning, the housing production plan was the first thing that we needed to do to kind of protect against that. The next thing that we need to do is start creating those housing units on our own, doing it to meet the needs that we see exist and not let it be dictated by someone else. So, if the state sees that you're increasing those housing units, then they'll kind of, they'll say you're in compliance, in other words, you're meeting, you know, you're trying, and they, and they can, you can hold off, as a community, you can hold off a 40B development, unless you say, okay, you're developing it based on what we need at this scale and to meet these needs, then you can allow it, but you don't have to.
So, a few years ago, an offer came to the school district for land by the MAC, and what the person who's interested in donating it, donating it wanted was a sewer, a utilities connection under 128. So, they don't have that now, so that limits what can happen over there, and it's one way of controlling growth over there. But if, if you don't meet your goal and something like that happens, what's the obligation of the town to meet that municipal, you know, that sort of municipal services?
So, the town, there is not. So, the town does not need to provide any infrastructure to support that.
Great.
It would be all for, it would have to be a part of their, their cost of development.
Okay.
So, that's not, so that's not an obligation.
Sorry, I feel like I'm peppering you with questions, but for some of our planning.
No, it's all right, I appreciate them.
So, it sounds like we need to create 110 units over time. What's the time going for the creation of those units? Even if the target is, you know, I want to say either elderly housing or empty nester housing, there, if we have folks in town that vacate and move into the 110 units because they're empty nesters, that's still going to up the population?
Right, that opens up another, yeah. So, the time is, that number is based on census, so it's 10% of the, at now, it was a 210 census, so up, we can work on that level up until the 220.
Yeah.
And then, there's another benchmark, and depending on how much we grow, it may, we may need 150 units to meet that 10, to meet that 10%. So, it's that, it's the 10-year.
Is it not common, though, that like a lot of towns are not able, just not able to meet it, and even though it's a desired goal, it's not a mandated goal?
There's, it's not a mandated goal, there's no, yeah.
The fact that you're 110 units short may, and I don't know, it'd be interesting to hear your thoughts on how may translates into desire. It may never happen, and I don't know what the drive is to get close to that or just to have it...
To let somebody to come in and do it independently, it leaves you vulnerable.
It leaves you susceptible, vulnerable to 40B is kind of the only, the negative thing, other than the fact that there are some people who cannot afford to live here that, you know, would like to. But I think if, what we've heard in our planning processes, even the non-subsidized affordable housing is as important to the people who live here as the subsidized. So, getting to the 10%, yes, takes away that vulnerability, and gives you some level of comfort that you're not going to get something that's not consistent with what's already here in terms of the style and the density of housing, because what's here now has to comply with our zoning, but a 40B wouldn't need to. But what we've heard is that, you know, the other type of affordable housing is just as important to the community, really, where can our seniors go that's comfortable, whether it's market rate or otherwise, where can our shopkeepers?
So, just a question along those lines, when you talk about seniors, I heard something on the radio this morning, and they were talking about a study that had been done in several towns where they have, you know, facilities somewhere where they have the elderly together with younger kids, and whether or not it's, you know, like a nursery school that's next to, I'm just thinking out loud, but if there were to be, is there something kind of being thought about? You know, when you talk about some of the seniors that have nowhere to go and the waiting list for the affordable housing, is that something that's being bandied around? I mean, obviously, it would be, you know, in concert with us, I would imagine, because we have a preschool.
So, some of the, some of the thoughts, the ideas that have come to the top as we're thinking about what type of development north of 128, so health and education have really come, thought of as a good fit. So, assisted, assisted living and continuing care, retirement type community or health-related facilities has definitely been considered. In some of the planning, that includes additional help, because the MAC already has a health, you know, facility, and not, it's not a designation, but that's, you know, that's what their interest is, and so they're interested in how to expand that, whether it's through additional health facilities, or medical type facilities, or housing for assisted living, all of those things have been kind of thought of and will be tested in the survey. So, that's one of the things our survey wants to do, is say, if you're interested in development, what is the type of development that you think would fit the character and, you know, the lifestyle and the quality of life that's here?
So, something like that would be considered limited commercial development and be okay to look at up there?
It could be.
Okay.
And most changes, most facilities would need a zoning change. So, again, the master plan would say, these are our aspirations, but a master plan has no regulatory authority to it. All of, most of the ideas would need to be backed up either with a zoning change, a town vote, if it was a new project or capital, you know, plan, all of these things would come back to town vote. So, a master plan in itself has no regula, it's not a regulatory document, it's simply a vision document and an indication of where we want to go. That said, you know, the board and the board of selectmen said as we were thinking of developing this, that they really want to see it as a working document, one that can go hand in hand with capital planning in the years to come. So, we, so we really want to get it right, because we're hoping that, you know, the board of selectmen will see this as a capital planning tool and say, you know, we think that we need to concentrate on infrastructure, and so, you know, we will follow that as they're doing it.
You mentioned education as part of the development for that area, what's being bandied around for that?
So, yeah, that's a good question. I think education in the softer sense of the word, so I think the MAC does some programming with, what is the name of, they provide some space where folks that they're working with can do their academic work in there, I don't know if it's online...
Oh, they do, they have some tutoring.
And so tutors.
They have help tutors, yeah.
Okay, so those type of, when I say health, education, wellness, kind of, you know, things that are, that type of development is, the ideas that are bandied around. And then of course, on the other end of 128 is Gordon College and, you know, and they have land that they are talking about more actively managing, whatever that means, does it mean athletic fields, does it mean expanding that program, does it mean expanding education? Just both of these, both of the larger landowners within that district are just now thinking about it and it comes at a really nice time in terms of the, the community planning too and getting people.
So Gordon owns land in Manchester?
Yes.
I didn't know that.
They own the land everywhere.
Yeah. A lot of it's highly impacted by that landscape.
And on regional.
Yeah, and it's also, yeah, it's a lot of rock.
That Gordon piece is.
So when does Master Planning Committee meet and how can we kind of get engaged with what's going on there?
So we, we're, in the past, we were meeting like twice a month and our, and our committee that's been working for several years now is getting a little bit tired. So we are trying to do once a month. It's typically on a Thursday and I'd be happy just to send along an email to.
That'd be great.
To the committee.
Perfect. And you have public comment at those meetings, correct?
Yeah.
Great.
And there's not, we take minutes, they're not recorded, but.
Okay, great. Any other questions?
And I, and I should say also, on our website, there is a tell us what you think button on our master, so on the town's website, go to the master plan and there's just a tell us what you think button and you can just tell us generally, you can react to anything that's posted on there in terms of what we presented, et cetera, but and it's just, you know, anonymous, it comes into the, it's just a really nice, again, ways to get people to engage.
Yeah, right.
And we're finding that people are responding.
This is, so.
The expectation thing got it going.
Random, but any discussion about youth services, the future of youth services, the location of youth services in the future?
That could be something.
Because that's tied to.
Yes.
Well, right now, it's going to be worked into our planning process.
So that's a, that's a great question and thank you. There's a lot of things slip through my mind as I go through all these things that are on there, but I just met recently with the recreation, Parks and Recreation Committee and I know that they are, you know, often frustrated by lack of space. They feel like they, they work really well with the Memorial School now using space and they would love to know that that will somehow continue in that as you're thinking of how to build and develop the new facility that, you know, you think about ways to be able to close off space so that there's not, so that they can continue to that relationship and build it. I think that they like also, you know, thinking, I think that the, they're growing in their service, not just to Manchester, but I think the Essex, some of the Essex population are using that thing and I think it's a great thing to open up and maybe lots of ways that the communities can, you know, help each other with, by shared services. So, so absolutely, field space and, you know, usable space inside, there's, there's a real need for that. And if there's ways to win-win, that would be, that would be phenomenal.
Okay. Thank you so much for coming, I appreciate you taking the time.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
For your time. You want to?
Thanks for answering all the questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, onward, we are on, oh, evaluation. Okay, Pam. Sorry. We're just. Okay, so it's time for your evaluation. First of all.
It was our conversation.
It was a very, very good evaluation.
Talking about a 5% increase in that, but in fact, slides.
I think we can talk a little bit about that. Their plan, that plan, the master plan, housing plan, did you see that presentation? That was very good. I just think it's hopeful. Okay, so we're going to talk about your evaluation.
Okay.
Okay, I'm not going to read the whole thing, I'm just going to read a couple of pages. Manchester Essex continues to be fortunate in its leader, Superintendent Pam Bodman. Manchester Essex has received commendations from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, was named 14th best, best public high school in 2016 and ninth among all Boston area schools and first on the North Shore in 2017 by Boston Magazine, and scored higher than other nations in the Program for International Assessment, that's PISA, where we outperformed all other participants and in mathematics matched the performance of world leaders China and Japan. These results aren't just about our highest performing students, they speak to a thorough effort to reach all learners, build on student strengths and support individual challenges. DESC commendation notes that Manchester Essex has the highest relative of performance in both aggregate and for the high need subgroup. This is a district working for all of its students and the school committee takes great pride in these accolades that show the hard work and diligence of the administrative team, faculty and staff. The performance review that follows acknowledges the steady principal leadership of Ms. Bodman. While we can celebrate the district's success, Pam recognizes that we always have work to do as evidenced by the New England League of Middle Schools, elementary, special education and technology reviews conducted over the past school year and the planned assessments for fiscal year 18. Pam has placed strong leaders in strategic positions and leads in a focused manner, relying on the data gained from these views and from student-to-student assessments to develop curricula that meets the educational needs of a diverse student population. Further, the district has placed a special emphasis on the social-emotional needs of students and is rolling out a comprehensive program to address the needs, issues across the district. Pam and her team are also working out with the two communities to support these efforts. Challenges faced in the district include establishing a communication structure and managing operating budget within the confines of Prop 2.5 while still delivering an excellent educational product because of rising insurance costs that will be particularly daunting this year and those that follow. The district has a significant agenda in the coming year, negotiating the meter contract, finalizing the feasibility study, managing community expectations around budget and implementing a social-emotional curriculum. We feel confident in Pam's leadership and acknowledge the important role the school committee plays in maintaining focus and building support in our communities to execute, execute district bills and business. I'm going to keep reading. I just want to just go over your, your scores, which were good, but scores don't matter.
They don't.
You meet, you met and exceeded expectations in professional practice, student learning, and significant progress and met in district improvement. It's a really good record card. Pam is a great asset to our district, she's always prepared, thorough and thoughtful. Pam is always happy to do the hard work necessary to improve the district, moving thinking and practice forward and keep current in her broad and deep knowledge base. We now see this leadership style succeed in Pam's professional development efforts. Pam clearly has the supportive leadership team in the central office and in each building and her staff is thriving. We've seen some impressive state and international recognition of our student learning outcomes, which were referenced earlier, but Pam never, is never happy to just get comfortable, she's always looking for areas in which the district could improve. Pam consistently finds tangible growth goals, invites in third-party reviews in order to keep progressing and stays on top of trends and changes in all aspects of the field. For example, Pam has advocated for a community-wide social-emotional health initiative and she is involved, with communities in both towns, the YMCA is working towards involving all NARSD families. She knows that the community involvement is essential in order to optimize the social-emotional health levels of students in our district and strengthen that engagement. She's been proactive in communicating the need for the new elementary school and has been transparent about the current MSBA process. She's kept the building project running on track, meeting MSBA deadlines, working collaboratively with our project manager and has led the efforts of the school building committee. Simultaneously, Pam is also working collaboratively with both towns to ensure a smooth budget process. We now need to sell both towns on the funding for the building project while working closely with town administrators and boards, she's up to the task. She communicates relevant and necessary information regularly and in a variety of ways. She's always striving to reach all stakeholders optimally so that they consider themselves informed and engaged, but that is hard to achieve. We would like to do some work this year to try to further optimize Pam's communication efforts. The education of new school committee members could be more structured and straightforward as it is for new teachers. There's currently a small orientation process followed by a learn-as-you-go model. So this goes on and on, we're not going to read the whole thing, but you're doing a great job.
It's a team effort.
Thank you. And you always give credit to the folks that work with you.
Well, you are also the folks that work with me and it's a really great committee that works as a team and that's how we get to accomplish what we accomplish.
Yeah, and you have a great teammate. Too bad we can't, too bad we can't review him because I got things to say. Get in line.
What did you say, get in line?
So, thank you very much. You're really good at your job and.
Well, it's fun. We're stays.
Very, you know, makes us proud of the, the school district, you're a good leader.
Thank you.
She does do a very good job leading the team as well.
It shows, it shows when people present to the committee, I wrote it in the report, you know, your principals, your teachers, people from the administrative offices, when they come and present here, you can tell that they're presenting to us, but also to you, that they're proud of what they're presenting, that you've set them up to succeed and to want to come here and talk to us, they're excited about what they're doing, they, when they come with their kids, that, when they come with their students, their students are excited to present to us and it's across all learners, they don't just bring the shiny overachievers, they bring every kid and.
And those kids shine.
And those have shine and.
That's the thing that's great.
And, you know, they're looking at you proud and it's great.
Well, I'm really proud of the team. And I actually, we all, it's a fun group to work with, we get a lot of, we work hard, there's a great appreciation and we're just going to keep plugging. I think one of our strengths, but also our greatest weakness is it ain't ever good enough. Excuse my English. So we're always kind of pushing, trying to push to the next level. Doesn't mean it's perfect, doesn't mean we miss things, but I don't think we're composed enough. So thank you, and thank you for your support and supporting the staff and the teachers.
We're going to have public comment at the end, okay? Okay, so anything else anyone wants to add on this? Great, thank you. Okay, so school committee goals, do we have a draft copy of that?
I didn't bring it up.
Okay, so.
So much for preparedness.
No, 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 no. Give me that thing back. I, so.
I don't have, I can't get into.
I don't think we needed any edits.
I don't think we needed any edits either, I thought we finalized them. So why don't we just bring them up next time?
Yeah, so if they're finalized, if, I will send you guys the copy that I have, I don't know if I have the latest, but once I have the latest, then I'll post it to your page.
Yeah, I don't have it.
I have it on my computer.
Yeah. Okay, and then the solar panels, Avi, do you want, who's talking about the solar panels?
I will, that's okay.
Yep.
So let me, I gave you one slide on it in addition to an explanation, the one slide is from Select, I'm going to give, provide some context in a moment. Select is the vendor that's pitching us to do this, so not surprisingly, it's going to sound like a rosy picture. And I tend to shiver a little bit with things that are overly salesy, so we'll get to kind of cutting through the sales, salesiness to get to the bottom line. But let me start with a quick summary. First, proposal is to augment the solar panels that we already have in our district. We had some that we put on with state-funded grant, we didn't pay a penny for the design or the implementation, we own them, they're ours. And they provide a very small amount of production that offsets our use, I would say maybe 6% to 10%, something like that, small amount. And so that's step one. We put as much on as we would get a grant for and since it was, you know, zero cost to us, that was the maximum amount of the grant that we could get at that time. The proposal is that this company would come in, they would take care of the cost of installation and then we would essentially, they, they would own the panels. The generation from those panels would come directly to us and we would basically be paying them instead of paying National Grid for the portion that they generate. The concept is that it would, if they did the full amount that we're talking about, it would be about 24% of our total high school electricity production, middle high school building. In return, we get a rate that's fixed for 20 years and is about 29% below our current rate.
For just that piece of it?
I'm sorry, for that 24%. Yeah, that's right. So our total cost isn't going to go down by 29%, but that the 24% of generation that this would constitute will be at a rate that is 29% current, below the current market rate for fixed for 20 years. So let me just, before we get into the pros and cons and all that, let me just explain a little bit what that means. First, we are entering into a long-term contract, so we, you get some stability there, but you also don't know if you're a winner or a loser in the market. Market go up, market could go down. Second, you know, we're going to be renewing electricity anyway, we do from time to time, so we can kind of view these rates in light of that. So let me, let me touch briefly on some pros and cons and then also explain who this company is so you can understand whether we should be trusting what we're hearing from them. So first, let me take the second part first. We are part of a, like, an energy purchasing consortium of higher education organizations and also municipalities, it's called Power Options. It's a nonprofit organization, we pay an annual fee, it's short money and maybe, say 500 bucks or so, we get continual advice from them on the state of the electricity, natural gas markets, what's going on. They also do all procurement for us so that we can get the best contracts with the best terms and those companies that they contract with have to give us the best available rates. And those rates are usually pretty, pretty good. So we've been using them for electricity and for natural gas. They have also, due to an opportunity that can benefit schools like us, they've opened up a solar panel purchasing, RFP for lack of a better term, where they went and looked for, they solicited proposals for solar panel companies to come. And the reason being, there are benefits to these companies that can monetize benefits that we can't capture. So because we are, we don't pay taxes, for example, we can't get tax credits that are available on solar panel installations. There are credits that we could get if we owned and operated for, that state gives out to, because the state's trying to move towards more solar generation and those credits could come to us, so that's something we could get, but if we let them deal with it, that savings will flow back to us, so that's another reason why the rate might be lower. Because this company, along with getting tax credits that we can't get, would also get the state incentives and funnel that back to us in the portion, in the form of lower rates. And then finally, there's another component, which are these net metering credits, which is that the electricity companies have to generate, show that they're generating a certain portion of their electricity from renewable sources. And so they've gotten an incentive too, and so that incentive has a monetizable value that gets wrapped into the benefit that the owner, be it us or, or this company Select, could get. So all these benefits that come in the form of tax credits, which we couldn't get, state incentives and these net metering credits that would potentially go to National Grid, all of those get packaged into an amount of money that can benefit us. That amount of money, you deduct from that the cost of installation, which is why, you know, surprise, surprise, we don't pay a penny, it's because that gets deducted from this flow of income. That, and it also allows for us to get savings passed on to us. And so that's where, you know, what's in it for this company? Well, they're going to, they're going to make money off of this too. They do have a cap on how much they can make, in the form of, I believe it's an IRR cap, which maximizes the amount of investment return they can make per contract with Power Options off of the investment that they make. So, and I've heard that that's around 10%, I don't know.
Wait. I don't want, I don't want her to leave without being able to say something.
Yeah, that's fine, go for it.
Sorry, I apologize, I just.
That's okay, I'll, I'll be in touch.
No, no.
Yeah, yeah, it's fine.
Are you going to talk for more than five minutes?
No.
Go ahead.
I'm good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Solar presentations have a way of putting that. Anyway, so, so you get that concept. So Power Options recommends them, they've worked with other municipalities and, you know, other districts a lot. I've asked them why more districts don't do this, there's a lot of inertia because frankly, they've been pitching me for a while, but basically the state incentives are going to decrease over time.
Yeah.
The more that the state is in fact moving in this direction, the less incentives they need to throw out there. And so. And so, whatever price we could get today is lower than what we would have gotten had we done this a year ago. And it's higher, sorry, it's worse than what we would have gotten a year ago, and it's better than what we're gonna get a year from now. And in fact, it's not even a year from now, because, um, the, the state has increased, uh, has pushed out its deadlines a little bit, but we, we would need to get something built by the end of March to qualify for these credits and these rates. So, and, and we don't need to do that. We can always wait, but the 29% rate, uh, cut might turn into, you know, 20% rate cut, you know, something to that extent. And it's impossible to know, because no one knows what the state's gonna announce, et cetera. So, we, we can certainly take our time.
And you're locked into this rate for how long?
For 20 years, and so, I hate being locked into anything for any period of time. And I have been tending to renew on short cycle. Here's what I would say about that. If this is only 24% of our total, there is a kind of a portfolio theory that says, hey, why not diversify your risk or hedge your risk a little bit by taking some portion and just fixing it there? So, that portion, you can't get any upside, but you also can't get any downside. And, and then you're playing with the 75% that is still exposed to market ups and downs. And frankly, to be exposed 75% is probably a little bit more than we should be. But I kinda, personally, I do like the fact that you can hedge a portion, not all of it, and we get some benefit from it. And right now, the forecast is about, uh, $11,000 of savings per year. There is the current thinking, um, from federal government and from, uh, Power Options is that rates are intent, are likely to go up in the short term for some time, and that those could go up around 3% to 7% per year. And if that happens, our 11,000, you know, according to projections, could grow to about 30,000 per year in savings. And, you know, in our 20-year contract, you could be talking in numbers of about 460,000. That's what Select will tell you. Now, the truth is, that's only a 3%. I mean, so, it could be a lot higher than that alternatively. Rates could plummet, in which case, we don't really get any savings, but we do have price stability. And we don't lose money, because we're not paying for anything, but we are just losing out on the opportunity to get a better deal on 24% of our supply. So, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
What about the cons? Look, before you ask a question?
Yeah, the cons are that you're locked in.
Okay.
The cons are that you're locked in, eh, for 20 years. And that you miss out on the upside. If rates plummet, you miss out on the opportunity to, uh, to cash in that 24% at a lower rate. And, and I'll tell you, when I first got here, it was like right during, you know, so, we had locked in for five years during the Iraq war, when prices were at the highest, because the viewers, they were gonna go even higher. So, like, one of the first things I was able to do was get, like, awesome prices, and I really didn't do anything to deserve all that, you know, free money that was flowing our way. But that's what happens in the markets when, you know, you get fear and, you know, I, I think having the 24% hedge, where you just put it away, you don't think about it. And then you're really working with that other 75%, I think it has some benefits.
So, I told you I'd ask you lots of questions, right?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, so, my first question is, um, how will this work with the existing solar panels we already have? So, when you talk about a 24%, you know, solar portfolio, does that include the,
Doesn't include over and above, so it might be a total of 30%. But those panels that we have are not locked in to 20-year rates with this deal at all. It's totally exclusive of that. Those still get whatever rate we're getting from the provider.
Okay, so we're still locked, are we locked in with that other provider?
That other provider, we, we own them.
Oh, we own them? Okay, so we own them, we own the power generation? Okay, those came with a grant. Okay, that answers that. My other question is, um, so, Select, um, was working, or is working with Power Options as consortium? And they're providing, you know, all the solar needs for all of these individuals or these entities within that consortium? Do you see that as a bit of a conflict of interest?
With, with, in what sense? To me, right now, Power Options has an exclusive provider for natural gas and an exclusive provider for electricity. So, they do put out bids from time to time, and then they say, this is our provider. You, we don't have to, uh, sign a deal with them. We could go outside of Power Options, but they negotiate all the T, terms and conditions and get great rates with them. And, you know, uh, you can, definitely you're not gonna get federal rates going straight to the open market. If we hired a broker, and I get brokers pitching me all the time, you pay a brokerage fee, it ends up being about $2,000, which is more than Power Options, and, and they might get slightly lower prices. Last time I looked at it, that $2,000 wasn't necessarily enough to offset the savings, but could be. And I just said, you know what, I'm gonna stick with Power Options for 50. So, in some ways, yes, there's a little bit of a conflict, because they're locking arms with, with these folks.
Yeah.
No question. But having said that, in my book, knowing that there are a lot of other higher-end organizations that are widely known, this, I think Tufts was using them for a while, and they may still be,
How long have they been, you know, if you,
Select.
No, yes, how long has Select been with some of these, um, not necessarily municipalities, but maybe some of the school districts? What has their experience been like? I'd be curious about that.
Yeah, so far, I'm hearing very good things, and I've, and I've been asking Power Options about what types of negative feedback they're getting. They said the one criticism they had so far from all their customers was that an insulation guy brought his stuff the day before he was supposed to bring it. You know, he's supposed to bring it on on Tuesday, and he came on on one, you know, it was like, yeah. So, literally, they're not hearing problems now.
This is also under a decade old.
It's young providers, young relationships. So, 20 years is a long time under this model, and who knows what could happen? I will say, the prior exclusive provider was, um, it was Sun Edison. And I don't know the full details on them, but full disclosure, they did go bankrupt. So, one of the questions,
A couple of these solar guys have gone bankrupt.
You know, and it's like, you know, it's what happens, is that, you know, when you're on the bleeding edge, et cetera. And so, I asked, what would happen if these guys went bankrupt? And while I haven't gotten an attorney to review the terms and conditions yet, my understanding is that, A, we still get our portion of the energy for that rate. And they can sell that contract to somebody else, but they can't change the rate. So, it really doesn't impact us. The only thing I,
Can they change the lock?
The lock?
The duration, the 20-year?
No, they cannot change the duration. And what Power Options was telling me is that somebody, I said, well, sometimes people come in and pay 50 cents on the dollar when someone goes to bank. He said, no, you are, the terms and conditions we negotiated is that you get your rate, it's fixed, it's 20 years. So, the only thing that could happen is change the name of the company that you're paying me to.
Is solar, um, part of the discussion for the new building for Memorial?
Yeah, but it always is.
It will be. I think renewable energy will be.
And that won't affect this?
It will, nope. Well, no.
Separate, separate.
Separate building, so, yeah.
I have a bunch of yes or no questions? And they're only yes or no.
Okay, I'll nod her.
If there are upgrades to the panels, are they gonna provide them? If the technology, no. Uh, can they calculate savings each year and reprovide that to us?
We can pay for them is the short answer.
But it was,
Yep.
So, they don't, they don't upgrade them, even though they own them?
Unless we wanna pay more.
Unless we wanna change.
Can they calculate savings each year for us? So, we could show that in our budget presentations about how much we save from this.
I have it.
Great.
But,
So, that's a yes?
Yes.
Essex Elementary, is that, um, is that, could that be something that we would do?
No.
And then, okay, great. And then, uh, you were gonna, in the notes that you sent us, you were gonna explore this further. You weren't, it wasn't a done deal. What do you need from us tonight? That is not a yes or no question.
I would just wanna get your initial sense and anything else you would like me to inquire about. I would like to bring it back by the next meeting, so that we can take advantage of this pricing, or move on and say, we're not ready, and that's fine too. The only other thing I would mention is that it does depend on your lifespan of the roof. Yeah, if you had a 20-year deal, we may own the cost, we had to repair the roof significantly. We, but we would own the cost of them, taking down the system and putting it back up. I'm trying to get some price quotes on that, to see what that would be. That was another piece of advice I got from Power Options. I said, oh, I said, you know, what do you think? So, they're, they're really helpful. So, that's the reason Essex is in that. That roof won't be a 20-year roof.
Great, okay. Any other questions?
Just a couple of questions, comments. They, they can degrade over time, and I assume that they hold the risk if the solar panel performance degrades, or if there's a hailstorm and they go out, it doesn't matter, we're still buying.
They handle maintenance. Degradation will probably minimize some savings that we have, but they do have a system degradation factor in their model.
Okay, but, but they should guarantee that they're gonna cover if there's a hailstorm and they go out.
They're insured. They handle maintenance.
Yeah, and I don't know if that's considered maintenance or catastrophic.
Oh, okay, I can ask that question.
And the one other thing that I found going through this recently is competitive bidding. It, I'm not sure if we'd be required to in this. Oftentimes, I am not a big area negotiator, given it was easy to get a 10% or 20% drop in the, the cost, you know, I bought, just because there are many people out there. Some have gone to, like, Direct Energy, who I got deals from.
Correct.
They shifted to, they were primarily going after institutional customers that dropped all their residential, any new residential business. So, having somewhere where, here's a greenfield site, it goes on top of the existing, you know, roof, is very palatable.
And all I'll say to that is, that's what we got from Power Options. So, this is post-competitive bidding. We could say, we're gonna go into our own process, but then we're gonna come up with our own T and C, our own, and, and so that, I think, to me, I would feel less comfortable not being an expert in that.
I, I miss that they were competitive bidding.
Yeah.
I like solar, and I have a friend who does this in Vermont, and I think it's a good business model. I think everybody likes each other.
So, I'm getting a sense that everyone is in support of this, and you, and you're gonna pursue it, and we import it back to us as to what we're gonna do?
Yeah, I, thank you. I have one last question for you on it, which is, is the appearance of how this will look on the building a concern to anybody?
Uh, what do you mean?
I can show you very quickly.
Can they give us a schematic? Can we see the existing? I don't see them now. Is it, are they bigger?
Well, some of them would be, um, some of them would be on the slopes facing this way. We have a very good south-facing exposure here, and so, um, and I'm gonna pull it up right now, but,
Or did they give you a schematic?
We're a green school.
I mean, yeah, some people, some people will drive by and say, thank you for doing this and saving money. Other people will drive by and say, I don't like the way that that looks, and so, um,
Can I just tell you something? As long as they do not screw up our roof, because we are not paying for someone who doesn't know what they're doing to install panels.
We can get that, I'm sure we can get that work.
I mean, I have a book implemented.
Great.
That would be a great show.
They'll be yelling and screaming.
Yes, I,
What happens if they fly off in a hurricane, they replace them?
That was the question. My understanding is they handle all maintenance. I think Ken's question is, does it extend to catastrophic?
Right, is it, are they insured?
Are they going insured, because they're gonna own them.
Like, if it's gonna be visible to them?
I'm virtually certain, but I won't confirm that.
All right. Yeah, we might wanna make sure there's no snow.
Actually, that brings up to mind one very important thing, when it, when it is put in. In the middle of snowstorms, you occasionally get your buildup filled up in a mass avalanche that goes off all at once, because of slippery. So, you do need ice breaking or something on, to avoid that.
Remember that, the catastrophic snow winter?
Yes, you do.
Yeah, we have a slide, so I'm looking.
We have a community that's, I think so.
So, right here, you can see,
What is existing and what is,
This is the existing. The ones that look like solar panels are existing. The one that's blue lines or blue are, or blue squares are what are proposed new.
Wow, that's quite a bit.
So, is this gonna go right here on the side of the building?
That's actually,
That's the front sloping towards the field.
Yeah, that's all visible. That's, that's the circle.
That's a vertical side of the building.
No, no, that's a roof slope.
It's a sloping roof.
It's like a tin roof right now, isn't it?
That's the one of our,
All right, so, and up there too?
And right on the main entrance is the center of the building.
Okay, so this is like a,
From the top, what would you see from the front?
Well, right now, you see, I wanna say it looks like that corrugated tin roof all the way around. You know, like, you get it in different colors when people are putting,
It's a metal roof with, um, some grooves in it. Very state-of-the-art.
And it looks, it's, it looks nice aesthetically. It, it looks good. So, if we have to, this is a crazy question. So, okay, we have to get used to looking at solar panels where there's kind of more decorative. It's kinda decorative right now. Can those things take a beating? Like, with balls and lacrosse balls and pit balls?
Oh, that's a good point.
On a daily basis, car balls banging off the,
I did mention the ones that were, um,
Field adjacent?
Near the field, and I told them how it happened. So, I think that may be the lower right, and I think they did say that they might peel those off. So, um, but there might be other places they could put them. I did, he did discuss that.
What about freestanding? They wouldn't do like the freestanding?
They would love to do freestanding.
Because, I mean, I see a lot of sun and, I, I don't know.
Yeah, oh, they would be all over there.
I mean, if they can't put them near the field, could they put them,
On those rocks?
Or even over by the, um, the parking lot, by the teacher, you know, by the superintendent's?
Yeah, I, it would, I'm sure they would be very happy to expand it beyond this opportunity.
What about the, um, the teaching space we have between the two wings that we never developed?
I, I'd hold on anything there until we figure out the housing plan.
Oh, right, okay. Okay, I, can I ask a question? Is there a way to, this is very not green, but it's about aesthetics and community and the fact that we're located in a residential area. Is there a way to do this without having the panels on the more decorative roofing that does kind of line up with eye level to some of the problems?
I think it'll be tough, given what percentage is there, only because you're trying to get the southern exposure. That I can ask.
Will this reflect onto the neighbors?
I,
Maybe like,
Generally, out of steepened incline, that the, that the sun, if anything, is reflecting outward, we don't get. The other thing that could be asked is that this may be able to provide, the other alternative is provided shaded parking, shaded parking.
For the administrators.
Or more importantly,
Didn't Sarah do that at Endicott?
She may have proportionally, yeah.
Like a carport. So, she's been telling me I should be doing this since I came here.
Carports.
And she got me to Power Options.
Just from the footballs and the lacrosse balls as well.
Yeah, how about that? Solar, so protection.
Do we need to get a butter approv, I'm more asking so I remember, we remember follow up on it. Do we need to get a butter approval if we're going to change the,
I hope not.
Face of the building?
And I hope, I hope not. Have they given you photos of what it will look like from,
That's the photo I have.
Yeah, so we could, maybe they could give us photos of what it will look like from the ground and from a second story window across the street.
Even if it's examples of other schools or other,
Right. They should be able to do it on our building.
So, I wanna just make a list of the things we wanna know about, um,
What it's gonna look like? And then, what's the obligation to a butters?
Do we have space?
So, you don't mind me bringing this up with the town, uh, Manchester, to ask them?
Do we wanna go that way?
Well, that's how I'm gonna find out about the rules for my butters.
I have another question, just as we're brainstorming.
Okay.
What, the cost of maintaining, how do I phrase it? Snow removal? Like, now we're, are we, what's the obligation, what's the,
They've told me about that, that you really don't need to do much with snow removal. You don't really mess with them unless you really have an unusual level of snow to which they are worried about.
Bite your tongue.
Yeah, in which case, they come and deal with them.
Weren't there, wasn't there an article about, from, about these solar panels in China and how they were getting so dirty? They're really losing their effectiveness? They, they were not, yeah.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a problem. Or you have to worry.
Yeah, I, you know what, I, on that note, I, I would bring up a safety concern to what Ken was saying. If we have big hunks of this stuff falling off at any given time, if we have a lot of snow.
Hunks of what?
Snow. And if the fact it's a metal roof already, there probably is some sort of, catch-all or break, pump breaker holders installed, but typically, these sit six inches to a foot above the plane, the existing roof, so it might go over the top.
So, there's no lift to catch?
There's no, there may be no lift.
I don't think there was a lift to catch what came down three years ago. So, that would be,
Did anybody get hit?
Yeah.
Well, that's what I would worry about.
When it was overhanging, we closed the patio, is what we did. But we also, when we thought it was an issue, we brought people in to get on the roof.
That's fair. That might be a benefit to you, Ken, for putting these up and saying, PS, you also need to have the grids on the bottom of it.
So, I know it's not the,
So, we might pay for extra cleaning over and above what they would normally do. And we could, just like we would do to begin.
The rack systems that they use include those, is, oh yeah, here's this option that you put the rack system, it's just an extra aluminum grid that goes in the bottom.
Well, that's my, that's my question, and it's probably, it's, how important are aesthetics? And how, you know, does that factor into it, or do we just throw that aside?
I think it's a little important.
Yeah.
Hmm?
I think it's a little important.
I think it's a lot important. We're only talking about 24% of our portfolio. If we were talking about saving a lot of money on 100% of the portfolio, I'd say, I don't care how it looks. Let's go for it. But if we're only talking about a small portion of portfolio, and we're gonna wreck what it looks like visually?
We can increase the portfolio size. I might just caution that since we don't really, we've never done this before.
Right, the 20,
Yeah, might, and we are fixing it for 20 years. I don't know how much of a percentage of portfolio we go along with.
Yeah, I, I don't. I agree.
So, let's get some more information about aesthetics. You're gonna bring that back to us?
Yeah, I can see if they can do a computer model of some kind, or give us an example.
Perfect.
And we may have limited information to decide from, but I'll get what I can. And we may have limited information to decide from, but I'll get what I can.
And what, you know, and weather.
Catastrophic loss near the field and impact from sports and balls being kicked up there. Butters, which we're gonna ask the town, yes, of Manchester, and photos of what they look like.
And to Ken's point about the degradation, yes, these might degrade over time, but is there a, is there a cleaning activity within the maintenance?
They do maintenance of them.
They should hold the risk for that. If we're agreeing to buy at a fixed price for 20 years, they should.
Yeah, they do. They do. And I think they have some, I believe they have some incentive to get them to perform as well.
Yeah.
And I don't know how we calculate this in, but I would also, I think we also have to figure out strategically, if this does become a concern aesthetically for the neighborhood.
Yes.
You know, how much time do we wanna spend on making the sale for what we're going to gain from it if it jeopardizes our bigger project?
Yeah.
Generally, you notice that we have a lot different from, it's just a different dark shade on the roof. So, I don't know.
I'd like to see what it would look like in this building, and I'm pretty sure they can do that.
Thank you, Avi.
My pleasure.
Okay.
Sorry for the long answers.
That's okay. Any public comment? No. Any school community comment?
I like starting at six. Because now, they're thirty, I don't know.
Ironically.
Just getting going.
I have a comment.
Yes.
I think we need to do some communication about the raise of the, the rise in the parking, because a lot of students are very upset about it, and the parents are very upset, is what I'm hearing.
I thought that that was-
And I don't know how well we got the word out about that.
That happened in the spring. I know I saw some comments about that.
Should've been drawn, not know that it's more-
But it's one of those, again, it's one of those things where people are sort of like-
Did you get some calls?
The seniors all knew and were annoyed because-
They're just, I'm hearing from-
It affects them personally, yeah.
Well, them, and I'm hearing their parents. I didn't get, personally get a call, but I'm just hearing like it's, it's pretty much like a lot of complaining and sort of like what's going on.